Feel like I should at least start my first meeting presiding as a county judge on time. I intend to do it every meeting and sometimes I might not be able to, other times I will, but if you're tending to business, be here at nine o'clock between the business starts. Every meeting that I'm aware of benefits different, I'll try to let everybody know. So, welcome to everybody here. It'll be, as I say, my first opportunity to provide, to preside. I've presided at many other meetings through the years and know what it's like, what it's about, two things different from a whole lot of people, but all of you will get to know that. And if you've got problems, I hope you will come to me or come to one of the commissioners. All of you both are a particular commissioner and that would be a good one to start talking business with, with the county. And let them know and let them help you carry the ball. We'll, we'll get used to all of that as we go along and y'all may already be used to it, but we'll see. So, welcome to everybody and with that, the second item of business is the roll call, which seems kind of dumb to me. I'm sorry that I think things that everybody does is dumb, but we can look around and see we have one absent this morning and I think everybody knows who it is. But at any rate, we'll, we'll do a roll call, I suppose. Pete, you're here.
Here.
James Rosales.
Here.
I'm Walter Long and I'm here. Shelby Dubnik.
I recognize him, he's here.
Then Tracy Shedd, oh, not Tracy.
Tracy.
Yeah.
Tracy.
Is absent. So, with that, we'll have the opening prayer and I would ask you to stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I heard during the campaign that I was an atheist, that I didn't pray, but I thought I might give the prayer this morning to show you I do pray. God may not be listening, I can't guarantee anybody that, but I don't think anybody else can guarantee that either, so we'll, we'll start with a prayer. Give by your heads. Our heavenly Father, be with us as we attempt to aid this county and all of the people that reside in it, that live in it. They all have the same problems generally. They consider different problems though every day. We would ask that you be with each of us as we go through this meeting and as we go through future meetings. Amen.
Please lead you to the right. United States of America and to the Republic of Richard Sands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very limited agenda this morning on purpose. I'm kind of getting my feet wet and I didn't even do any real wildly crazy things this morning. We have plenty of time to do those and so you might get ready for some of that, it'll be down the way. We're gonna go back right now at any rate to having citizens to be heard at this part of the meeting. And so, with that said, if there are any citizens who won't be heard, you need to speak up right now and we've moved the diff from, put him over there and that's where you'll be speaking from today. If that doesn't work the way I like for it too, I'm going, yesterday we moved it to the place that does, but I do not want it out here in front where the speaker has got back to the people who are here. And as far as I'm concerned, we're not gonna have it there. We may stick it anywhere, who knows? We may put it at the back, I don't know. We'll find something that works and today is so here. So, any citizens to be heard? This morning, I'm gonna limit it to about three minutes and I won't, I haven't talked to any of the commissioners about this, but I think I have the authority to do that at this meeting, so you will be limited to three minutes and with that explanation, anybody will say anything. Get up here and get acron.
Good morning. My name is Jared A. Lewin.
Push that red button. Red light coming on.
My name's Jared A. Lewin with the Texas State Department of Natural Resources, county extension agent. We just come this morning to present an invitation to the commissioners and to county judge for the District 11 Commissioners and Judges Conference. It's gonna be held in Port Lavaca at the Bauer Exhibit Building on Tuesday, December the 16th. So, I've got invitations here with an announcement letter and an agenda for the day. They're gonna be providing five and a half hours of CEU credit at this meeting and so we just wanted to present y'all with an invitation and opportunity to attend.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I have an invitation, I thought our commissioner court meeting is on the 16th, but I was just told it's not on the 16th. Is that correct or not? You're up, no?
December?
December.
No, sir, it's not on the 16th. We have two meetings scheduled this year.
Have two?
The doctor did on October 8th.
Anybody else that wishes to speak? All right, we go to item seven on the agenda, no, item six, I'm sorry, reading out the minutes. There's some where you go. Go ahead and read.
I'll read, we'll read.
Has everybody read?
I said.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Rosales, the second.
Okay.
By Dubnik. Any discussion? All vote, all for the approval of the minutes. Does this include the, all sessions of the minutes? I believe there were.
Yes.
Two sessions?
All the ones that were presented.
Yeah, okay. This is for October 23rd. October 20th, special session, October 23rd. Regular session, October 14th and the regular session, October 31st. So, we should be in October, October meetings. The, the three meetings in October are the ones we're considering at this point.
Yes, sir.
And all vote, all of you that are for the approval of the minutes, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All voting for, so they will be approved as presented. Item seven on the agenda is a presentation by accolade hospice proclaiming the month of November, national hospice palliative care day. It is authored by Pam Aikens. Ms. Aikens?
I should just send a proclamation for you.
Am I supposed to?
We can read it.
I won't hurt to read it.
Well, I can read it.
Well, it's your proclamation then.
Whereas hospice and palliative care empowers people to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illness. Whereas hospice and palliative care bring patients and family caregivers the highest quality care delivered by an interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals that includes physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counseling, health aides, spiritual care provided, and others who make the wishes of each patient and family a priority. Whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregivers trained and assist in emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully and make more meaningful moments until the end, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. Whereas each year, hospice saves Medicare more than $2 billion by providing solutions for physicians, care to patients, and comfort to families anywhere at any time. Whereas each year, an estimated 1.6 million Americans living with life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. Whereas the most recent statistics report that more than 355,000 trained volunteers contributed 16 million hours of service to hospice programs last year. Whereas hospice and palliative care provides encourage, encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with families, loved ones, and their healthcare professional.
All of you have heard the proclamation. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation as the proclamation of the commissioners' court?
I shall move.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All for the adoption of the proclamation by accolade hospice indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All for, thank you for presenting it and it will be published as the, as the proclamation of the commissioners' court. Item nine on the agenda, discuss adopt Texas.
Please.
I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I'd already marked it off because I thought we'd already done it. I'm sorry. Ignorance of another citizen's donation of $40 given to the current county sheriff's department in memory of former employee Sergeant Irvin Snell authored by Chief Robert Ebron, Chief Ebron.
Sure.
Yes.
Good morning, how y'all doing this morning?
Y'all, y'all tell me the right one. Y'all, y'all get together and decide next time and, okay, so we don't put you wrong.
Okay, well, I can come up here.
No, you know, why don't you come up there? It's, it's, I'm sure the proclamation of both of y'all and the whole sheriff's department. Go ahead.
Judge, we had a donation.
Use the mic. Everybody's gotta use the mic, whether you know how or want to or not.
Test them.
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay.
No.
Push the red button.
No. Go show.
Good morning, all right. Judge, we had a donation that was given to us in memory of former, our former employee, Sergeant Irvin Snell and we are bringing it to the commissioners' attention for y'all to approve it, have it approved.
Okay, and you want us to, to approve it? I don't think it has to be, but.
Just to acknowledge.
Acknowledge.
Acknowledge that the.
That we did receive it.
And is there a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the $40 donation in memory of Sergeant Irvin Snell?
I'll make it.
Motion by James Rosales, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Yaw. Any discussion? All for the, I don't know what we're calling it, I guess, acknowledgement, yeah, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the, the donation is recognized and we appreciate it very much. Sergeant Snell was here a long time and a very integral part of the law enforcement in Carls County, I know. He worked, he worked for the city, I believe, first, before y'all, but we appreciate you very much. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, now we're going to item nine, discuss adopt in Texas county and district retirement system contribution rate for 2015 at 11.88 percent authored by Adam Malone.
Good morning, everyone. Basically, this is just a formality that we have to do. What TCDRS does every year is figure out how much money we need in the pot in case someone retires or people retire. There's a chart that I did provide you with what we are required to have. Our current rate is 13.85 percent that the county contributes. The employee contributes 7 percent of their salaries. That is the highest maximum that you can do, you cannot lower that. So, now we are, TCDRS is saying we need to contribute 11.88 percent of their salaries toward their retirement. And this is the rate that was used in the budget process also for the contribution.
And the rate becomes effective January 1st?
Yes, it becomes effective January 1st, but we, it has to be approved by December 15th. If we didn't want to adopt this rate, if we want to do, I guess, assuming a higher rate, we could do that, but this is the rate, the required rate is 11.88 percent. It becomes effective January 1st because they're, it runs calendar year and not fiscal year, our fiscal year.
I haven't looked at the budget, is this a budget item?
Yes, that's how the budget was calculated with the 13.85 from October through December and 11.88 January through September.
Okay. Any other discussion, court members? Any questions at any time? Motion to approve the contribution rate of 11.88 percent to the, adopting and approve both to the Texas County District Retirement System contribution rate for 2015 at 11.88 percent. A motion?
I'll second it.
Shelby?
I'll second it.
And the second, motion made by Shelby and seconded by James. Any discussion? All vote for by showing your right hand.
Oh, you changed it up on him.
Well, we have to learn a variety of things, one of which is how to put up with me.
Left foot, right foot?
Well, we'll see on that one.
Fix me.
Stand up, sit down. All voting for it. Motion carried. Payman Bills is the next item on the agenda.
Okay, I know y'all really don't need me to use this, but since the judge said, I will use it.
Everybody needs it.
Okay, items out of the ordinary that I will point out.
I think it's on.
Yes, it is. On page three, under capital outlay, the total expended this cycle on the EMS facility is $22,257.45. On the jail tower is $5,808. On the jail facility is $19,238.88. And on the financial software conversion is $781.25. There's also an item in this category payable to Walmart, $96.83 that was miscoded. That is being moved to the next category, 510 for courthouse maintenance. It's not gonna change the bottom line, it's just the category it's paid out of. You go to page five, under county information and technology, there is a payment there for $1,308 to Leeds Online, which is a online participation that the sheriff's department has for their investigations, $1,308. That should not be paid out of that department, it should be out of the sheriff's department. So, that move will be made, that was also a miscoding.
Who prepared this?
Audit Chair's office, Gina in my office.
Why was it missed?
Actually, I think it was a miss of the fingers, but I caught it this morning when I was reviewing this, so she has changed it.
Excuse me for interrupting.
You go to page nine, you will see payments to Naismith Engineering for 1747 project as well as $5,674.50 to Naismith on the Seal Coat Resurfacing Project. And on the side, we did submit our first request for reimbursement to Texas Dot on We also have our quarterly payments to the Rural Fire Fund on page 11, which totaled Total for this cycle, $868,847.43.
So, the one on, on the fire fund, the, what's the, on page 11, the expenses that were, expense amount, that's the amount that was paid to each department?
Yes, it's itemized. The city gets certain amounts based on the number of fires and then the actual fire departments also receive amounts based on the number of fires that they responded to.
Okay. So, like, if I'm reading right, we received $30,000?
Actually, City of Runge received $30,000 and the fire department.
Received 30?
Yes.
Okay, so that's 60. This was kind of throwing me on.
No, the city received five and the fire department received 30. Theirs all goes to the city. They don't have it broken out between the department and the city.
Okay, thank you.
And you will also notice on there that there are travel reimbursements to the five directors on the Rural Fire Board, Harvey Kiner, Elfron Mitchigamba, Franklin Conote, Robert Pabritza, and Raymond Jupe. Those are annual reimbursements.
And the, Mike on, or can I, on 1747, what did Naismith do for County Road 182? I know we did on 326, but what did they do on, on page eight, I guess, eight?
Nine.
Nine.
Most likely it's all the survey and the geotech.
Geotech work?
Yes.
And then is $27,252 bits submitted yet or is it totally just been? Are you, I only submitted some to this part of it?
No, it was submitted through October 31st.
Okay. And while I got, when I had you here, you submitted a letter and I received a copy and email and that there's on November 21st that, Mike, have you gotten with the wanted to, to break out the seat terms expenditure so we can, out of the $19 million dollars to be out of my, maybe all of it broken out where, where we seat terms money and what it won't be?
Yes, I got with her this morning and we reviewed it and we're gonna go ahead and present it to commissioners' court. On Texas General, that's court.
We have a meeting Monday. Although we posted today a prayer. Okay. I think, so you might check. With my secretary or with Bert Hancock here is about it.
It says on, it says the ninth on this paper.
We're gonna post another meeting on first Monday, we'll post it today for Monday.
Okay.
I believe.
You wanna go ahead and put it on that one or you wanna wait till?
If you guys ready, put it on that.
Okay.
If you don't have it ready, y'all, you said something wrong.
It's ready. It's ready.
Okay. I just want you to know when, when we, we could consider it and I will consider it as soon as you can.
I'm getting posted today.
One, I have one question. On page one, or number four and nine, McGinnis operated $9,735 permanent services. What's that for?
That's involving the research with the treasurer's office.
I wanted to tell you that I apologize to you for sitting, you sitting here in my office yesterday, waiting for the appointment that I had made with you earlier and I, I got involved in something else and didn't get back to, I was here later on and didn't call you, I didn't think I would bother you again, but.
I, I do have this stuff with me, so we can talk after court if you're available.
Okay, I'm available.
Okay.
Until noon, I've got something.
It won't take that long.
Well, and I won't do that again.
Okay.
I don't mind apologizing for something I'm wrong about in front of everybody and I was. So, well, nothing else I wanna say right now, but we'll, we'll meet together and talk about some of this in the next few days.
Okay.
I'll call you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? While, while as you've urged highlighted on page, at least it is on my copy.
Those are the two additional invoices that were put in from when you picked up your bills yesterday.
Okay. Page five.
Shelby and Pete got copies of the bills early yesterday and we had two due verse bills that came in with deadlines up Tuesday for submission, so knowing that we didn't wanna have late charges or have that hassle, we just inserted them in the cycle.
When were the bills ready for us to look at?
They would be, I've got a schedule for you, that was one thing I brought you yesterday. They were ready, today is Wednesday, they were ready Monday afternoon where you could have viewed them. The actual printout was done yesterday afternoon.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk with you about that later. I'm not going to, I don't believe the, the court looks at them carefully, not because they're not willing to, but because we don't have them early enough to look at with one day or two days, they're voluminous and it's just something I'm concerned about.
Okay.
And I'll discuss it with you, with the court members at the appropriate time.
Okay.
All right. I don't have anything else, anybody else?
Motion to face?
Yeah, motion to face. Make the motion to pay the bills as presented. Second.
I'll second.
We've got a motion to second for us to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? All for signified by raising your right hand. Any against, raise the same hand. All voting for. We're gonna require against and for every vote, so be thinking about it. That's the agenda, I think.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else that, nothing on the agenda, so I guess we have to quit. I don't think we have any choice.
Can I make an announcement?
About what?
Food bank on there?
Yeah, sure.
A bit of food bank will be on Monday morning at 10 o'clock at the Showborn.
Honey?
Huh?
Honey?
Sunday first, that's, that's the first Monday of the month.
You can look to tell me.
And I just wanna report that I went to the groundbreaking for the, the communal real, uh, mental health group, they had a, they're building a, I guess it's a, a facility where they can actually start to treat some people. Problem in Texas is that beds are hard to find and Senator Zachary was very instrumental in that, her passion is mental health, so she was there and other representatives and they had a groundbreaking for their facility, probably able to hold like, I wanna say close to 30 people that, that get 24-hour care, is what my understanding was. So, it's. So, it's, it's going to be, be a big plus for Carls County and part of their area. Just a comment for a second. Shelby kind of jiggled my mind. Senator Zapparini is a really good friend of Carls County. And I don't know that all of you know her or knows what she does. She's a Democrat. She has kind of been put on the back burner to some extent. She did not tell me this. I have some folks in Austin I know very well. And she, she may be the best friend we could have up in Austin. She's helpful always to anybody from down here. And she comes occasionally to visit us for one thing or another. And. Sign the bill? Do what? Yeah, sign the bill. Well, we. We'll have to do it. Well, we all will. Okay. Where are the two there? On the one that's not marked and written. We don't have, don't have a line that we can sign on. Would you go for initial? Does that do? That considers, do, do very well. That'd be a good job. You, you think that a vision is the same as signing? This is, I'd see what they're. What's today's date? It's 11/26/14. I want you to initial and sign both. And maybe initial every page if we're going to get technical. That's not that. I know. I will. But I will. So, I'm sure it's all. Y'all just had to put up with me. I'm sure it care.
Should the progress payment for the jail been on those bills that I turned into the auditor's office yesterday?
If it was turned in yesterday, no, it will not be until the next cycle on the night.
Okay, because she said that we had to, um, we have to get it approved to the court today to be paid on the night.
It has to be approved by the architect before we can submit it to the court for approval.
It was? With her letter? She had her letter with approval?
As Mr. Wong mentioned earlier, we have a deadline for submission for the payment cycle. If it was submitted yesterday, it won't be on until the next cycle. They have to be submitted a week prior to court.
Must be five days to get it.
A week prior to court.
A week prior to court.
Yes.
Well, that's fine. I was just.
I didn't say that and I didn't even know it, so I couldn't.
I didn't. No, that's fine.
But if that's what the court normally does, that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
And we may change it down the way, but at this point, well, I apologize if it caused you any inconvenience.
No, no, that's fine. No problem at all.
There is a bill in this cycle for the jail facility. It is.
444.
No, the one that is being paid today that was authorized is $19,233.88.
Okay, that's got to be for tower stuff. I think. I don't know.
It's to rock engineering and to daily spirits.
Yes, that has to be to the tower. That's fine. I was just mistaken. No big deal.
If there does become a problem like that, please let me know.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? No, I did adjourn. Second. I do. Any discussion? All, all for adjourned. All for adjourned. Raise your right hand. All voting for. We're through. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here.